...October 11th, 2016. Please stand before the leaders.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Calvin Brown, District One. Anthony Demato, District One.
Jody Philzgagney, District Two.
Dave Bills, District Three. Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
I'm work Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Mabella.
And I'm work Emma King. Add on a moment of silence for two to five minutes. Before we get started, I have a recognition. Certificate of recognition. Theresa, would you please come up here with me? She didn't know I was doing this. Did you all see this? Okay. So Theresa, out of 169 communities, was voted the Connecticut, 2016 Connecticut Town Clerk of the Year. So I'm going to present this as a certificate of recognition. This certificate awarded to Theresa Pack, 2016 Connecticut Town Clerk of the Year in recognition of significant achievement and outstanding award of Town Clerk of the Year by this Connecticut Town Clerk Association, City of Bristol, Mayor Emma King. Congratulations.
(applause) I was actually at the Town Clerks Conference. My staff knew, but I didn't. So they all showed up that night, along with my husband, who also I had spoken to an hour before, and I didn't know he was there. So, anyway, thank you. I appreciate it. That's double the news today with the AAA rating, so.
Appreciate it. (applause)
Remove minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 13th, 2016, and the special city council meeting on September 6th, 2016.
(inaudible).
Second.
Most main section of discussion. Hearing now, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Add on number three, public participation, Brian Cohen. Name and address for record, please.
284 Womantic Road. Come up there and vote, please. Sorry. My name is Brian Cohen. I'm from Chaplin, Connecticut, 284 Womantic Road. Is that good?
Yeah, perfect.
Very good. I don't usually speak this way from the public, so pardon me if I seem nervous. It's a strange place for me to stand here and do this right now. I also got to apologize, I did have dress shirt. Unfortunately, I was here all day, and I lost the battle of ketchup. This is what we have. I do want to say this, that Bristol is one of Connecticut's largest cities. It's a very important city. Many people look up to you guys, especially the smaller towns. Congratulations on the AAA rating. That's pretty cool. And congratulations for your award. Also want to say that six city council members worked together, Republican and Democrat. That's like the coolest thing, especially in today's day and age, when people are really petty, they argue back and forth. You guys showed that three Republicans, three Democrats can actually sit at a table and figure out how to do what's best for everybody. So that's really cool. I just have two questions, and then I'll be out of your hair. According to the website, the Bristol Housing Authority, the mayor's responsible for the commissioning of the officers, is that correct?
This is your time to speak, not me to answer.
Okay. Can anyone identify that as a correct statement, or just leave it at that? All right. From my knowledge, according to the Bristol Housing Authority Facebook page, I mean their actual webpage, the mayor of the city of Bristol is in charge of the commissioning of the members, the five members of its board. Since I don't know if that's validated right now, I'm going to assume that that is correct information. The other question, which I apparently am not going to get an answer, but I ask anyway, is why is Gary Shaffron, the current vice chair of the Bristol Housing Authority? And that is the question. I'm not going to get an answer, but you all should figure that out and ask yourselves, why is Gary Shaffron your vice chair of the Bristol Housing Authority? It's a taxpayer federally funded organization. I thank you for your time. And by the way, you guys really rock. You did a really good job. Thank you for your time.
Ed Ducko.
What?
Call something else up.
Okay. Ed Ducko, 116 Lewis Road, Bristol. Congratulations also on AAA rating, means we can all go west. Ms. Pack, too. You know what? I promised you a couple jokes, and it's a good night, so maybe we could give Ms. Pack some time off. I got the stopwatch. I'll start it myself. (inaudible).
You've already been talking.
Well, okay. Look. I hope you appreciate this, I paid $6 for this prop. What am I supposed to do? Open up a restaurant, tell you your food's up? Patsy told me, don't get into food business.
That too is my grandson.
What, yeah? All right. Well, folks, to get serious now, what do you say? Also, everybody getting along here? Everybody? But be serious, I'm thinking about Memorial Boulevard School of the Auditorium. What I read was $12 million, right? You're thinking about spending $12 million. And you're thinking of, what I read too is you could rent out 500 seats, so it would be a venue of 400 seats. Now, I wonder if for a taxpayer, Jesus, that's, I don't know how you could make your money back at that way. It'll take decades. I mean, there's going to be the cost of management there, there'd be cost of the acts, there's going to be cost of electricity, I'd love to see, I want that building saved. But I don't know if it should be saved with only four, well, it should be saved, it should be saved. Look, I just don't like the idea of 400 seats. And more importantly, when it comes down to it, you know who really should decide about spending this money or not? It is the taxpayers. And this is why I'm a big proponent of referendum item. We don't even have a municipal election this year, that's next year. But between now and then, that's over a year, you could hammer out what you want to do with Memorial Boulevard, get that word out to all the citizens via the media, and then the people will decide next year, not this election, next year, whether they want to do it or not. You're talking $12 million? I haven't seen $12 million, except when Renaissance wanted us to build them apartments. Remember that? There were the $6 million. If things went to referendum, I don't know if some of these things that happened in Bristol would have happened. I don't know if we would have bought the Center Mall site. I think what happened to my family on Middle Street would never have happened. And you could just set a number, you know, any item above $6 billion, that it should go to a referendum. That's what I'd like to see. Because you could change everything, like even the southeast Bristol Business Park wasn't supposed to be a distribution center. It is a distribution center. It wasn't supposed to have, what, two people working per 1,000 feet? Now you're going to have one person working for 4,000 feet. And I am not somebody who's going to get rich there. It ain't my family. It's going to be this uniprop AM limited liability corporation out of Birmingham, Michigan. I see they left the front empty. Oh, he'll come down the road in 10 years and say, they want that subdivided, and they're going to sell that for millions. I think that you've got to move more things to referendums. And, you know. Okay, that's enough. Thank you. What am I going to do with the bell? All right, thanks.
Good night. Announcements. Before we go into announcements, I want to be the first to congratulate the Exchange Club, the Chamber, and the volunteers that worked on the Mum Festival. Jack, you did an outstanding job, you and your team. You worked tirelessly, I saw you all down there all day. You have a huge, ahead of you next year, out of this year, so great job, Jack, all done.
I think the Senator, thank you very much, Mayor. (applause)
Add on my far left.
Hey. I just have two items tonight. The first is the annual TIPA firefighter event is happening this Thursday, October 13th, at Chili's, from 6:00 to 10:00. Our firefighters will be assisting the waitstaff, and this year the proceeds are being donated to the friends of the Bristol Animal Shelter. The second thing I have is just a reminder that the 13th Annual Holiday Showcase of Stars has begun preparation for this year's Christmas show. There is still time for children to join the kids chorus and adults to join the adult chorus. With the closing of St. Anthony's School, all proceeds will now benefit both St. Matthew and St. Joseph's Schools. This year's show is titled Can't Stop the Spirit. Showtime is Saturday, December 3rd, at St. Paul High School at 7:00 PM. What started as a fundraiser for one school has grown into a highly anticipated community event. For those interested in joining the chorus, children's rehearsals are Sundays at St. Joseph Guild Hall at 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Adults will rehearse from 6:00 to 7:00. Right now, tickets are available at the Chamber. Adults are $12, kids 12 and under are $5. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The Bristol Senior Center is holding a craft fair on Friday, October 21st, and Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM each day. Event is free, open to the general public. The senior center is located at 240 Stafford Avenue in Bristol. Senior Center crafters, as well as outside crafters, will be on hand displaying their wares with a variety of items for sale. A prize drawing will be held, and a coffee shop will be equipped with breakfast and lunch as well. For further information, please call the senior center at 860-584-7895. In addition, the senior center will be hosting a free shred event that will be held on Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Parkton Bank is sponsoring the event. It is a paper-only event, and people may bring up to three boxes to be shredded. Now is a good time to start organizing your files and get rid of your excess paper. The event is free and open to the public. The senior center again is located at 240 Stafford Avenue. And if you have any questions, you can phone them at 860-584-7895. And Mayor, the last thing is, this is our last meeting, I think, before our election day. And I think our right to vote is probably one of our most sacred constitutional liberties. And so many countries wish they had the freedoms that we have in terms of voting. And there's so much discussion and consternation, I think, over the national election, but we encourage everyone to vote. And I read a statistic recently that a number of people who do vote don't drop down and vote on local elections. And I encourage everyone to ask questions, look at the ballot very carefully, not only vote on the national elections, but also for our delegates to Washington, and even more importantly, in my view, is our representation at Hartford. So I'd encourage everyone, please, please get up there and vote and tell all your friends. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, again, I'd like to congratulate Jack and your committee and everything, everybody. It was just amazing, the enthusiasm and the participation in the Mum Festival and all the people that came to Bristol. I understand there were approximately 50,000 people that came to our city for that weekend, which is absolutely unbelievable. And Cheryl, I have you in the audience, if you could just give me the dates of the Pumpkin Festival. I know, I think it's the 30th, is it the 30th?
It's the 30th.
And it's from 5:00 to 7:00, I believe?
Yeah, registration of the care for the pumpkins starts at 4:30, 5:30. And the children's parade is the first event that kicks off at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. I know that's usually a big event, it's well-attended, and it's something terrific that happens in Bristol. I'm going to ask Ed Switless to come up, but I just want to note, if you haven't driven by Eastern or Central, the fields are complete. They look unbelievable. They are just amazing, the artificial fields, they are finishing up, and you can, I know that Eastern, they worked on the D-zone today, which is one of the end zones, but we're pretty close, and then why don't you just kind of fill us in a little bit?
Right. Eastern, both fields are done. Both fields have been tested, they're all set for play, they can't practice and play on them. At Eastern, right now they're going to do the track over. And probably about seven days before that track is complete, so I think they'll probably cut back some activities because people have to cross the track to get into the field. Once that's done, that field's complete. So I got to say, by next Friday, weather permitting, which is going to be good, that field will be done. Central, they're doing the Let's Go right now at Central. The light should arrive, I think, tomorrow. The only issue we're having with Central is the power. We have to put a pole in the street, whoever, EverSource and Frontier get together, you know, I've called them a couple times, so that's up to them. But everything else will be in, and bleachers are on order, but the bleachers probably won't be in until end of October or maybe mid, middle of November. But that field, they can still pray. And the D-zone, as soon as Eastern's done with their track, they'll go over to Central. Central's going to be a little bit different because that's a latex, whereas Eastern's a more polyurethane. But other than that, they're on schedule, they're on budget, and they're moving on.
Thank you. The reason I made it for announcements, one of the things, they are working on the track, so people that walk on the track will not be able to walk on the track, obviously, this week.
Especially at Eastern.
Especially at Eastern. You know, there are signs up there, but it's amazing that the public just comes down, maybe the signs aren't large enough. But anyway, if you could stay off the track, that would be the announcements, to stay off the track. How's that? Does that go all right? Okay, but seriously, I mean, if you haven't had an opportunity to drive by, drive by either field, you'll be amazed at what they are, they're just absolutely spectacular. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me make that announcement. That's all I have.
Yes, I have a few. The Older Members Association of the Bristol Boys and Girls Club is having their 10th Annual Pasta Dinner next Friday, October 21st, at the Giamatti Little League Center, from 5:00 to 7:00. It is going to be $10 for adults, $5 for children. And the Boys and Girls Club just had their humanitarian dinner last week. I want to say congratulations to all the award winners. That includes Webster Bank, Valerie Fury, David Cuslin, Howard Smelder, and Craig Yard. Also, the Bristol Boys and Girls Club is having the Daddy Daughter Halloween Dance next Friday, September, October 21st, from 6:30 to 9:00. And finally, I want to reiterate, congratulations to Jack for the Mum Festival, and I also want to mention that in this year's Mum Festival, we brought back the Miss Mum pageant, which I attended, and it was great to see it back after so many years away. So thank you, Jack.
Just only one thing, Jack, you're in the hot seat tonight, because I got to congratulate you, too. And the only reason why I'm going to do it is because it was a pleasure working with you, whatever we can do for the Mum Festival, so I appreciate working with you, you did a nice job. And the only complaint I have is I had to get really wet in the dump tank, and I wasn't happy about it, so. And cold, yeah, so good job. That's all.
Well, I've never heard of this Jack Ferraro, but he sounds like a great guy. And congratulations to the Exchange Club as well. It was, as everybody said, it was a blast participating, and it's always a hopeful thing for the community when community groups like the Exchange Club step up to protect tradition in our hometown. So thank you to all of you.
Way to, my first, thank you all.
A couple other announcements. Councilman Fortier still on my announcement about TIPA firefighters, so I'll just reiterate how important it is to support the Friends of the Bristol Animal Shelter and the firefighters for this great cause. Going along with Councilor Proleski's message about the election, I want to remind everybody that the only legislative debate for the Bristol delegates will be next week, it's Monday, October 17th, at 6:00 PM, I believe, at St. Paul Catholic High.
It might be 7:00. Do you bring on that?
6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM? Oh, there we go. All right. So at 6:00 PM at St. Paul Catholic High School, next Monday, October 17th, the state representative candidates that are running to represent Bristol in the 77th District, which covers the northeast area of town, or Tony and Ice District primarily, will debate. The candidates running for the 78th District, which covers sort of the western portion of Bristol and most of Plymouth, will debate. And the candidates running in the 79th, which is sort of South Mountain and downtown and Forestville, will also debate, as well as the candidates running to represent Bristol and Plainville and Harlington and Plymouth, and that's it. Thomaston for the state senate. So it's really important to try and get out if you can, and that will help you inform your vote, that I hope you will cast on November 8. And lastly, as many of you probably already know, October is an awareness month for many important initiatives, and one of those that's important to me is AIDS awareness. And last week, Wednesday of last week, the mayor's task force on HIV/AIDS held their annual AIDS awareness vigil. And I just want to point out that we still have a group working in the city of Bristol to try and promote awareness, try and de-stigmatize, and to hopefully try and provide resources to people that need support resources, that need to find out information on how to be healthy, and on how to learn about HIV, and how to be protected. So I wanted to give a shout out to the HIV Task Force, and if you're interested in learning more about what we do, or interested in being part of the vigil next month, excuse me, pardon me, next year, you can feel free to reach out to me, and I'll try and reach in touch with the task force members. And that's it for me.
Thank you. I just have a couple. We work, we continue to work now with the Board of Ed, as consolidation. We've targeted a couple of things that we're working to consolidate with, and we've had a number of good meetings, and we're heading in the right direction there, and we should have something very shortly on that. The other thing is, we are working with Bristol Blues for a five-year contract extension, so we're working to keep them in town, they're happy here, we're all excited to have them. I know this past year outdid the attendance that the year before did, so they continue to grow. So that's just having our city. That's all I have. Add on number five.
Hey, Your Honor, I'm sorry to always go last again, but we've kind of forgot one thing. I didn't mention it because I wasn't sure if Calvin was going to mention it, but I really want to give a shout out to Steve Gagney at the Beat Bristol's Rock Mix, because Calvin and I, this past Sunday, got to have a little chat on there, and I tell you what, two of us had a lot of fun, it was pretty cool. So I know Dave Proleski and Jody were on there as well, so when you get a chance, check out the video, it's something pretty cool. I know there was a lot of watches online on Facebook, and, you know, Steve, I had a good time, I think it was really great, so I appreciate talking to you on Sunday, Calvin.
You did, absolutely.
Yeah.
Add on number five.
Consent calendar, there are four items. Five A's to place on filed a new priority report for September 2016. Five B's to approve the tax refunds dated October 4th, 2016. Five C's to award contract to 2P 1721. Professional services analysis at school readiness programs to Capital Region Education Council for $12,500 and to authorize the mayor to execute. And five D's to consent to assignment of contract to P 1680, dial ride transportation services with Bristol Community Organization Incorporated to Human Resources Agency of New Britain Incorporated and to authorize the mayor to execute.
May I do accept?
So move. Second.
Most main section of discussion. Hearing now, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Add on number six. The reports. David, do you want to do that?
Sure. I'll go first. We have a motion from the Real Estate Committee. I hereby move to grant to the Veterans Strong Community Center permission to use a portion of Depot Square to place a mobile vet van on November 17th, 2016. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the event at Depot Square, Depot, I'm sorry, Center Square. And I further move that for the better view, refer to Corporation Council for insurance compliance. Second, further move that Mayor or Acting Mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the sentence.
Let's take a downhill. Second. Most main section of discussion.
I was just, I just had one question. What exactly is that vet van, and what is it doing? Partly so that we can let folks know if it's something, a service that folks will be interested in.
I want one. Proles, maybe you can help us out with that?
I think it's just a van, like the DMV van, that will come and have information for veterans.
Okay, sort of like a mobile?
Yes.
Okay, great. And when is it going to be there?
The 17th of November.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, all in favor. Opposed, motion passes.
I have another motion. I hereby move to grant to Firefly Hollow permission to use a portion of Depot Square for the third annual anniversary celebration on October 22nd, 2016, for overflow parking. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the event at Center Square. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office for insurance compliance. I further move that Mayor or Acting Mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the sentence.
Second. Most main section of discussion. Hearing now, all in favor. Opposed, motion passes.
And I have one more. I hereby move to grant to Veterans Strong Community Center permission to use a portion of Depot, of Center Square to place signage on the property to advertise their Monathon 8K road race. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the event at Depot Square. And I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council Office for insurance compliance. I further move that the Mayor or Acting Mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the sentence.
Second. Most main section of discussion. Hearing now, all in favor. Opposed, motion passes.
And there's one more motion from the Real Estate Committee, but I'll have to recuse myself for that.
Mayor, I have them. I hereby move that the city of Bristol approve the lease agreement by a new city of Bristol landlord and the family center and tenant for property located at 296 Riverside Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of one year commencing October 12th, 2016, through October 11th, 2017, with the option to renew. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $3 per square foot for a monthly lease payment of $500. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the Mayor, Acting Mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the sentence.
Second.
Second.
Most main section of discussion. Hearing now, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Committee reports, starting with my first.
I have two. Both registrars of voters came to the last Disabilities Commission meeting, and they explained some new technology, which is the Inspire ballot marking system for people with a variety of disabilities. It's an accessible voting device enabling a voter with different disabilities, including visual impairment, to vote privately and independently. The voting device features a touchscreen display and includes alternatives such as audio, tactile keys, and customizable displays to accommodate voters with a wide range of physical, sensory, cognitive, language, and literacy abilities. It's a huge improvement for us. In the past, we did have folks that could help somebody mark their ballot, but people often felt uncomfortable with that. If they needed assistance, they couldn't write themselves or make the mark because they had a problem. And this is great technology because it's adaptable to lots of different folks. So again, as other folks have already said, voting is one of our most valued rights, and so we're just very happy that the registrars have this technology. They did explain it to some of the folks at the Disability Commission meeting, and if anyone's interested in that or has questions, they can certainly contact the registrar's office. For BCO, it is in the process of finalizing its agreement with HRA, which is the Human Resources Agency of New Britain. In the past, I've called this activity a merger, but at this point, it is going to be an asset transfer, and assets and contracts plan to be assigned to HRA as of November 31st. And as I've tried to say, over the last few months, services will continue to be available at South Street here at Bristol, and so we're hoping for a very smooth transition. That's it for me.
Thank you. Got some. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. The Organists Committee remains very busy, very active. Mayor, last month, you sent a couple of items to us, one of which is the issue of an immobile food truck issue of a restaurateur on Stafford Avenue. food truck issue of a restaurant tour over on Stafford Avenue. The Organists Committee and with the advice of Corporation Council referred that to zoning. There are more zoning implications, we felt, at this point, so before we look at it again, we're going to have zoning, take a harder, quicker look. Hopefully that's okay with you, Mayor. On the fire board, there's something that could make us all very proud. The fire, the fire board gave commendations out to two of their fine staff, Lieutenant, if I blow these names, you can hear me, right? Lieutenant Angelus, and Lieutenant Angelus and firefighter Rogalwitz were commended for activities they did in saving a woman's life on August 28th. What made me feel really good was the talk of, the banter that was about, went about about all of the first responders there who worked very well together in a coordinated effort. As we reported last month with that issue on Valley Street, where there are 30 people sent to the hospital, everything was flawless. That should give our residents a lot of confidence that our first responders are top rate, and these two fellows who were commended from the fire board are Bristol guys. And so that, that, that's, that shows that they're well-trained and they know what they're doing. Makes you feel good. And the last thing is from the BDA. We voted this past month to extend the due diligence period on a letter of intent for Bristol Hospital for 60 days. The primary reason, and it's a valid one, the hospital, as we might have reported through last month, has seven suitors who qualify to be their business partner and development partner. They're in the process of whittling those very complicated relationships down to maybe two or so, and we should have that by the end of the month. And we hope to have a purchase and sale agreement, sometime thereafter. Meanwhile, everyone should know that the BDA staff is working on other infrastructure issues and other issues that will be part of the development plan, so we're not wasting time, we're moving forward on issues that we can tackle at this point. And Mayor, thank you. Yeah, let me just jump on to that. The downtown area, the mall area, is moving forward. We have a lot of activity going on there. I know you don't see any shovels in the ground yet, but unfortunately, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes before it could happen with shovels in the ground. As Councilman said, we have the hospital project going. Once they have a developer on board, they'll start the process of zoning and planning and get all the proper approvals. We're anticipating they're going to be on the, they're on the fast track, and you'll see sooner than later, not soon enough for any of us, but sooner than later, you will see shovels in the ground. We're also talking with other developers on that parcel, so there's a lot of stuff going on downtown. Just because you don't see anything happening doesn't mean nothing's happening. The other thing that I wanted to throw on here was the old Bristol Press building has been sold as of last Friday. The owner of Bikers Edge purchased that building, he's going to be bringing Bikers Edge downtown, and the city will help with our facade grant in fixing up that building. He's putting a significant investment into the building. So again, this is one of the buildings that, we've been working hard to get the right developer in there, since it's our key downtown coming right off the boulevard, and the owner's going to do a phenomenal job on that building, as his beautiful building that he has on Route 6 that he keeps it well-kept, so I'm excited about that, I think we all are. It'll be nice to see people test driving their bikes down Memorial Boulevard as he's selling the bikes, so that's an exciting thing. Anything else? I'm good, thank you, Council.
I'm going to ask for permission to just give one announcement, I'm sure they're doing this.
See, you did reverse.
I know, I did reverse.
So now I want you to put the announcement now.
Right, the one announcement was to congratulate Craig Yar for his, the dinner they put on at Center Square for the first responders. Dave, you kind of triggered my memory there. It was attended by over 500 people, it was a terrific thing, they had a chicken dinner down at the, down at the law site, and it was our Center Square site, so I just wanted to give them a shout out there. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Good.
Yes, man, a few. From the police board, for anyone who doesn't know, the police board voted last month to allow art back on the traffic lights, and I just wanted to let everyone know, the city just hired two new police officers who will be starting the academy soon.
They started already?
They started already. And the NBS Building Committee, nothing new is happening on that building, but I just wanted to address a few of the issues that I heard today. It's not $12 million, we don't know the numbers yet. The architect still doesn't have the finalized plans from us to be able to get us those numbers, so it's, whatever number we put on is a gift at this point in time. It's also not a 400-seat theater. The final plans have not yet been drawn, but the building committee is asking for at least 750 seats, but right now, we're working on the number of parking spaces that must be available to a theater that has 750 seats in it. So that is what we're doing at the moment. It's a work in progress, nothing is yet set in stone, but we are working on it nonetheless. And from the parks board. The Halloween Costume Parade and Carnival will be at Rockwell Park on Sunday, October 23rd, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There'll be a photo booth, face painting, train rides, a dog costume parade, carnival games, crafts, and more. There will be a pumpkin patch slime pool event at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center on Sunday, October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This is a family event with music, games, snack, and more. Leaf pickup has now begun, it will continue until the winter, and I wanted to let everyone know, Muzzy Field will be rewarded the Facility of Merit Award from the Connecticut Parks and Recreation Association on November 21st for being an exceptional Connecticut facility, so congratulations then.
Council?
Yeah, only announcement I have tonight is from the Public Works miscellaneous committee. I just want to give everyone an update on the LED lighting situation here. We received bids from all of the vendors, we're going through those bids, and we're going to test out another vendor's model of lights, so I just want to let everyone know that that's coming, so we can hopefully arrive at a final conclusion and select a proper vendor with the proper light fixture and get that over to Public Works and hopefully the city council.
Okay. Council?
Just briefly, from the Energy Task Force, the task force is hard at work, still working on a series of recommendations on how the municipality and the departments of this municipality can practice more energy efficiency, and that plan will be coming just sort of as a presentation and series of recommendations, policy recommendations, to this board in the coming months. Also, some members of the Energy Task Force will be traveling to fuel cell plant and manufacturing facility later this month, on October 21st, to sort of begin to understand fuel cell technology, manufacturing process behind it, and how fuel cells are helping drive more energy efficiency for municipalities and private entities across the country. So, hard at work, trying to develop better practices for the city and hopefully save money for the residents in the long run. That's it for me.
Thank you. I have one. Unfinished business, starting my far left.
I do, I'm sorry. The first one I had was for Attorney Kawicki, and it had to do with our friend Sean's questions about initiative and referendum, and you did say that you were going to look into that to see what the issues surrounding putting big ticket items on referendum work, and if you have done that and you want to speak, I'm sure Sean will be watching the tape, if you haven't, you know, he'll come back and remind us next month.
Actually, what I was going to ask is if Sean could narrow his inquiry-
Question.
Right, exactly, down to something more specific as to what it is he's attempting to accomplish, and then we'll try and do the best we can to help him.
Okay, thank you. My second bit of unfinished business is for the mayor. As part of the censure last month, the council adopted the recommendations of Attorney Rose. And the first recommendation has been sort of perhaps incorrectly referred to generally as an apology, but I do want to clarify, the recommendation actually says that Mayor Cockain needs to acknowledge wrongdoing. It doesn't say anything about apologizing, and we've gotten a lot of apologies, and we, the council, received another email apology, and it's still not clear to me, and so I just want to ask you as directly as I can, Mayor, are you acknowledging wrongdoing in threatening two city employees?
Will I fully comply with the recommendation? I have nothing more to say on it.
Okay, thank you. My next bit of unfinished business is for the Personnel Director, if you could come My first question is, do we have the sexual harassment training scheduled?
We're looking at the week before Thanksgiving, but I don't have a definite date. We're going to use the law firm of shipment and good one.
All right. I will say on the record that I have a trip planned out of state that week, just in case there's options for more than one date for folks that can't make it, but I do appreciate it being scheduled.
Okay.
And I did want a little clarity left. Last month, you had said that our last sexual harassment training had been sometime in the spring, and so you mean spring of 2016?
Yes.
Okay. And my third question was, again, just because I didn't specifically ask it last time, is did the mayor have sexual harassment training since he has become mayor, associated with the city, obviously?
I don't believe that he has, but he's being scheduled.
Okay. Wouldn't he have been required by statute to have had that previously?
He should have had that training, yes.
Okay. And do you have a particular reason why it wasn't done?
It was just an oversight.
Okay, thank you. My last question, and I'm not sure who can answer it, but the marketing position that we worked on last month, I'm just wondering where we're at with that, if we finalized?
It's been advertised and we have a closing date this Friday.
Okay. As well as the other position in?
Same, same.
Okay. And they are-
You mean the economic development?
Yes.
Yes.
In media, and they're both like code savers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Council?
Yes, the only thing that I had to report was, we're supposed to be getting a report back mid-November on Memorial Boulevard, option of moving City Hall to Memorial Boulevard with figures, et cetera, it should be out in the middle of November. That's all I have, so.
Nothing.
Done, your honor.
Council?
Um, this unfinished business, no?
Yes.
No, done.
Okay. New business, starting my far right.
I had a question, your honor, about this, this IT committee that's been developed to try and look at efficiencies with the IT. Correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding. You're on the committee, Mr. Clark was on the committee, and Superintendent Solik is on the committee, no?
No. What we did was, we met myself, myself, at City Hall side, talking about consolidations as a whole.
Yeah.
Myself, Glenn, Personnel Director, Scott Smith, I don't think Wilson was there, was that it?
Roger.
Roger Russo was there, I could be missing someone. On the Board of Ed side, it was the chairman, a couple members of the Board of Ed, Dr. Solik, Sam Galloway, and I think-
Tom and Chris.
And Tom and Ryan and Chris Wilson. Jeff Cadjano was there also, one of them in the meetings. And we talked about what we could look to consolidate, and it really focused, and we came, we targeted four different things that we knew we could really work to, to get progress. That then dwindled down to one, which is the IT, only because the IT, and I'm going to call him director, he may not have the right title, at the Board of Ed, has moved on and there's nobody's position.
All right.
But before that position was filled, we talked as a group, let's look to consolidate that and work together. So we have to come up with policies and procedures and how that's going to work. So we decided as a group, we're going to have a four-person committee, I believe it's going to be, and on our side, it's going to be our IT person, Scott Smith, and Glenn, am I on that? No, I'm not on that.
No.
No, Glenn. And on the Board of Ed side, it's going, two people, I don't know who they are.
Sumuro.
Sumuro and one other person. So those four people are going to come up with a procedures and policies and how we're going to work together as a group. So that's where we are.
Okay. I guess my, my question was going to be, did you anticipate any representation from this body on those discussions outside of just your office? In other words, are you anticipating a council liaison?
At this point, this is management stuff between Board of Ed and the city, so, no.
No, nor Board of Finance involvement at this time?
Not at this point.
Okay.
All right, we have to, we have to figure out how we're going to work together right now, so it's really premature, too premature to do it.
Okay, that was a good question.
But we're just saving savings.
Sure.
And besides the savings, streamline as well.
Sure.
Anything else, Council?
No.
Council? New business?
None.
None?
No.
No.
Resignations?
There's one resignation, Kimberly Carvelich from Bristol School Ratings and Sales.
You accept and send a letter of thank you, please.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments. We have one, commission for disabilities, or commission for persons with disabilities to appoint Ronald Nesselson to replace Robert Lynch, resigned, unexpired term to 618.
Second.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let me say also, we have a number of openings for appointments, so if you're interested in sitting on a burb on a board, please, or a burb, please let your council people or myself know, either our emails, calls, we all have Facebook up here, and let us know what you're interested in serving, and every month, the commissions come up, and we'll look to get you on a board that we all feel will, will help the city. Item number 11.
Authorization for Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain, or acting mayor, to execute amendments to contract 2P15, 61 Professional Services Ecological Risk Assessment with Foson O'Neill Incorporated for $28,300 for Phase II Ecological Risk Assessment Work and Review by Corporation Council.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 12.
Authority contract 2C1715, replacing the fuel oil underground storage tanks at Bristol Schools to ETT Enterprises Incorporated for $166,000. Authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Mayor, question please, is this contract, I know this is part of what we talked about for the tenure capital plan, are these in budget or on line when we thought they were going to be price-wise, Roger?
Yes, they are, they're within the budget appropriation of the capital plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 13.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application with Connecticut DOT Highway Safety, fiscal year 2017, comprehensive DUI enforcement grant, authorization to execute. There is a resolution, please?
I can read that, your honor. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety, fiscal year 2017, comprehensive DUI enforcement grant is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Ken Cockain, or acting mayor, and the chief of police, or acting chief of police, are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other